The agenda, I need to add, under new business, solar law for Ryan Corici. And then, pardon? Is it? I'm looking. It's not mine. Okay. Now, Ryan, what else would you want to? What else besides the solar law that you need to add?
We had the amended map.
Hold the mic down, please.
The amended map for Riverwalk and Wolf Run.
Steve, where will we add that?
Under new business.
No, but any order or?
Yeah, we'll do it after the solar law, so at the top. Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Just bicentennial?
Yeah.
Bicentennial through the agenda?
And I believe Mr. Appella has something to add as well.
Go ahead.
You said you're going to hold off on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The extract, Councilman Guyven.
I move to approve the regular extract of claims from fiscal year 2017, thirty-nine fifty to thirty-nine eighty-one, and the fiscal year 2018, number one twenty-four to three-hundred-and-forty-two, recommended payment amount of four-hundred-sixteen thousand, four-hundred-fifty-five, and forty-nine cents. Post audit of thirty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Motion for the approval of the minutes from regular town board meeting on January twenty-second.
One correction, page fourteen, I should have called Carol earlier in the day. Supervisor is absent, the motion, S four fee transfer, that's moved, it should say carry four-zero. And there's one, a lot of discussion regards to the liaison for this signage committee. What we did was inappropriate. Morel moved to appoint Guyven as liaison, and that's a supervisor's duty to appoint, and that, and I think Dave Train wants me on the committee and Rob as the liaison. So, do we do that separately? Or is it?
We could do it under old business.
Okay. Move to approve the minutes of January twenty-second as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Start with Chief.
President. Just so the board is aware, we had the active school shooter exercise that went very well with all the fire companies and some different police agencies involved as well. And just so the board is aware of it as well, there's a letter that the supervisor has. We have, one of the part-time officers is just hired in the city of Niagara Falls full-time, so he'll be leaving as of March first. And we have two other part-time officers, an interview and tentatively were hired by Lot Four Police Department. So I'll be conducting some interviews come this next month, try to get everything rolling for summertime, so we have manpower for the busy times. But I'll probably be back within the next couple of meetings with some names for approval.
Also, you want to touch real quick on what happened at Loopport last week? Just real quick.
Yes, there was the hazmat incident at Loopport, at Lewiston Porter. They had one of the workers that was mixing, putting the chemicals, sulfuric acid, in the pool room, where they chlorinate, well, they put the chemicals in for the pool, and somehow or another, they were delivered liquid chlorine, which they never get. So when she was pouring the sulfuric acid in, she grabbed one of them, poured it in, thinking it was sulfuric acid, it was chlorine. So the chemical reaction is chlorine gas. She got a little bit of that in the face. She was taken to the hospital and treated and released. And one of the workers, also the head of the buildings and grounds, went in to try to shut the vent, and he was exposed in that room as well. We had hazardous materials, hazmat teams from Niagara County and from the United States Air Force Base that responded, and they were able to remove that item and make it safe again. So it was quite lengthy, as all hazmat incidents are, took a lot of the day, but none of the kids were in danger at any point. They were moved to a safe part of the school. And through the whole event, we had both hazmat teams that had the air monitors that were going all through the school to make sure that there was no contamination.
Good, thank you.
Chief, two things, have we sponsored anybody in the academy recently?
We don't usually sponsor people in the academy anymore unless it's a full-time position. The part-timers, what they have now is a phase one and a phase two. So we really haven't hired anybody. Anybody that we've hired has already had the phase one. So usually what we do is when we make a decision as far as who we're going to pick up, then we supply them with phase two.
Houses supplied. Houses supplied potential candidates?
I have a stack of applications, probably with his business in my office, people stopping by all the time that want to get in, which I'll take as a compliment for a hard one. But it's, we narrow it down, and we're going to do probably about five or six interviews, and then I'll have some info.
It's actually a pre-employment candidate, you send yourself through it.
Yeah.
So it gives the kids opportunity. Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Marty, you have any, you're on the agenda, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mike Townsend, anything?
No.
Dave Train?
A mission statement?
Okay, yeah.
All right. I had, in your packet, I have a mission statement for all yous to go over. I was wondering if I could have it approved and have it done and put it on the website under the Highway Department's.
Do you see it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have it in my office. Yeah, I read it, and I wasn't sure with it. Ryan, you looked it over, correct?
He included it in the list.
Yeah.
All right, so I just needed approval, so I can have it on the website, on the Highway Department.
Okay. Here you have it as the winner's safety gram, is it?
Well, underneath it, it says mission statement, but it was a winner's safety.
Okay, now let's see that one right here. Oh, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the mission statement from the Lewiston Highway Department. It's dedicating to providing safe, courteous, and economical service wherever and whenever possible for all our residents.
Do you want authorization to post it on the website?
That's all I do.
That's part of your motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So, aye.
Correct, thank you.
There's it?
Yep, that's it.
How's the weather?
I don't know, I'm going to go check.
Jeff, Ritter?
I would like to thank Dave Train and the guys from the Highway for helping us last Monday at the treatment plant. We had a delicate situation where we needed some heavy equipment in the anywhere rescue room. Thanks, Dave.
That's it?
Yep.
Bob? You're good? All right. You're on the agenda. Okay. Finance. Marty?
We have a couple of things, and actually, compared to prior years, these are really minor ones. We've had just a few budget adjustments that I mailed to you that were in the packet. Budget revision edit list dated February seventh, two thousand and eighteen. These are just reclassifications within the budget, meaning like for equipment going down contractual within the same department. The only exception to that was within the insurance for the, which fund? For one of the funds, I took it out of bank and agent, it's six dollars. I mean, we're really talking about very minor adjustments at this point. We've really taken the attitude that the budget has to be there before we can pay the bill. And so we've really been trying to be very faithful in that and reviewing everything. And so that's why these budget adjustments are needed. They may not be the last ones, but if you notice, this list is getting smaller and smaller, and the dollar amounts are getting smaller and smaller. I've been very impressed with my department, with our department heads, and how they're monitoring their expenses and are really so much more aware than they have been in the past. I want to give them kudos that it's really made a huge difference in my job this year over prior years.
I don't believe you gave them a choice.
She didn't.
They accepted their punishment well.
Well, they followed through. They didn't have to listen to me, and they did, so that's okay. So I need you to approve the budget revisions on that list first.
Make a motion to approve the budget revisions in the list dated February seventh, two thousand and eighteen, time twelve fifteen and twenty-eight seconds.
We have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and there is one other budget adjustment that needs to be done. This is in the Lewiston Heights Gas District, the SLO fund. This fund only has one account in it. We have our, or, we have a utility bill that has come in that will make that mine item overspent by three-hundred-and-forty dollars, which is miniscule, but we need to appropriate fund balance. They need to, it needs to come out of their fund balance in order to get that bill paid so that it was on the abstract. I don't think that, you know, I've been so fighting any kind of appropriation of fund balance and all, but for three-hundred-and-forty dollars, and they have sufficient fund balance that that should not be an issue whatsoever. So I need you to approve appropriating a fund balance of three-hundred-and-forty dollars for the SLO fund.
Will you approve? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and that's all the budget adjustments I have. The other thing I did want to make you aware of, there's nothing that you need to do for today. We do have a computer server, which is our NanoARC server. This was something from the grant. The NanoARC system is the one where we store the old documents for the building department, the assessor's office, and the town clerk's office. That server is starting to act up. We are, we have an estimate to replace that server of three-five-hundred dollars, which that's not in the budget. But we're looking at other options also, whether it can be tied in with the current server, if it needs to be a unique server and stuff like that. That is a cost that's coming down the road that we're going to have to deal with within the next month or so.
What's housed on that server?
Pardon?
What is housed on that server?
That is all the old documents that were scanned in for the town clerk's, the assessor's office, and the building department. It is a unique server to the NanoARC system.
It's the ECMS system.
All right.
Electronic Content Management System.
That's routinely backed up also, I was doing that.
And that's what's having problems, so that's.
Backed up?
Yeah.
Very good. I tell you, why don't we go right into the health consortium issue?
The health consortium? Okay, we can do that, too. In your packets, I believe, or maybe I put it on your desk, we have, we are participating in the health consortium, which is being spearheaded by the town of Somerset. Back in August twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen, the board had authorized a total payment of seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars to cover a two-year period of the health consortium. This was a matching grant and such. We have a total bills that we have got, invoices of eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents, which is a hundred-and-twelve dollars and sixty-three cents over what the board has authorized us to spend. So I need the board to either authorize that expenditure, give us guidance on the health consortium moving forward, what you want to do. The expenditure comes out of the supervisor's contractual, so the money's there, so it's not a matter of transferring money. But where the board specifically limited the amount of money, we don't feel that we can pay that invoice without the board approval.
So basically, we have a motion to pay the bill of a hundred-and-twelve dollars and sixty-three cents over the amount that we can approve.
An additional, to approve that expenditure.
Make a motion to approve an additional a hundred-and-twelve dollars and sixty-three cents to pay for the healthcare consortium for, was it two thousand and seventeen or two thousand and eighteen?
It's two thousand and seventeen.
With the funds that come out of the supervisor's contractual budget.
Okay.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Supervisor, will we have a discussion on this at some point, to whether we?
It's still, I mean, it's still in the process. We're still participating. They're going to do another study. You know, it's whether the unions are going to go with the consortium or not. I mean, it's a long process, and I think the first time they went through, the unions weren't crazy about going with the consortium. Now they've had, you know, some mixed emotions, so it's just kind of a hurry up and late.
We need to authorize more funding for that.
Well, no, I think we approved.
I mean, this just covers what we've been invoiced for. If they're continuing, I'm sure we'll get an additional invoice, but I have no idea how much you're going to.
And what I would do is I would ask them what they think for two thousand and eighteen it would cost, and we would approve that. That's what we did for two thousand and seventeen, it was just over that, over that D. Okay. Is that it, Marty, for the findings?
Yeah, the rest of it's under new business.
Okay. So under old business, the big fire hydrant with New York Power Authority and Bob Land?
The side of continues. We had a conference call today with our, myself, Ryan, Marty, and Amy, with New York Power Authority folks, and got some clarification on the forms they need and how to fill them out, so still work in progress, but I think we're getting it.
But any, I talked to Ryan a little bit, because I came in at the end of that phone call. Any costs that's incurred by the town, the engineer, whatever, is paid for through NIP. We're not paying it back.
Once we get, right, these forms filled out, then yes, then they'll authorize, they'll cut us a purchase order, and then from there, we can consider awarding a contract to the son, and then get the bills, and then we'll bill NIP, and it's a long way around to pull them apart.
Right, right. Okay. I don't believe we have anything on the board commission vacancies. We still have to, I don't believe we have an application. Have we received any applications?
I don't know. Donna didn't put any money, she said another.
Are we publishing for that?
Yeah.
We're advertising, so we're just not getting any. Environmental Commission Secretary.
At the last board meeting, we decided to reenact the tower committee, and we gave them the opportunity, if this member of the committee wants to be the secretary, they would be paid the same amount as the chairman. I'd like to offer that same arrangement to the environmental commission, and I will attend the meeting tomorrow night and present it. The secretary will have to get the packets together, get them sent out, and so it's going to be a little bit of work, though they'll have to make a decision on whether they want to accept it that way. If not, we'll have to repress it again.
Okay, so you need a motion?
No. Well, yes, well, I want to make a motion that I can authorize that, so move.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So move. In the lighting advisory, the ex officio, I'd like to table that, so I can get somebody to step up the plate also on there. Okay. Well, also with the liaison to the, what was it, the sign?
The sign.
Signing, so I guess what I will do is, I would, were you added on, Mike, Bob, were you added?
There was a little confusion. David Train called and asked me to be on the committee. And when Rob read the list off, my name wasn't there, and I didn't know if something had changed that I wasn't aware of. So Rob added my name as liaison, and I said, sure, that'll work. And then I saw David, and he said, I'd already had to be on the signed committee, Rob still continued as the liaison. So just appoint me to the signed committee.
Okay.
Please.
So I would make a motion to appoint Councilman Guyven to the signed committee. And you already are the lead. Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So move. And that's on both actions, correct? Yes. Now, under new business, the solar law.
So at this point, the law needs to be introduced. I need, we would need a motion to announce the town board's intent to act as lead agency for the purpose of Seeker, and then a motion to set a public hearing, sorry, a public hearing for March twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, at six p.m. during our work session.
Now, that's the same one that you emailed us recently.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I make a motion to approve the solar law for presentment.
Can we have some discussion on that?
You know, okay, hold on one second. We personally make the town the lead agency for Seeker?
Yeah, so first you introduce the law.
Okay.
The law's introduced.
Okay.
Next, a motion to announce the town board's intent to act as lead agency for the purpose of Seeker.
With motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And then a motion to, and I guess just so we're clear, the law isn't being acted on tonight.
Right.
And changes can still be made to the law, and that's the purpose of having the public hearing, getting the public's input. We will be sending out letters to interested agencies, they'll be allowed to have their input as well. And then if there's any changes, there's just certain requirements that the board have the law in its final format before it can be voted on. But at this point, it's just a matter of setting it down for the public hearing at this point.
Okay. John, would you like to talk about that before?
Yeah, I only have one concern of any consequence. The idea that we're going to put ground-mounted solar panels in residential, R one and R two, that have a ten-foot overall height, that's a pretty tall height in the residential area. You know, in the abstract, you'd say, well, what's the problem with that? But if you go up to, say, Oak Run, and you look at the quality and the size of the lots, I don't know if we might maybe head off some problems. You get one, some guy wants to put up a whole bunch of ten-foot panels, and the neighbors might not like that.
Now, the law is specific, I'm sorry, the law is specific for solar farms, correct?
It is. It controls, it's not just solar farms, it would be residential, so units for residential properties as well, and then it does touch on commercial scale solar as well.
So I guess what we're saying is, if you have any questions, or, because we had some questions, Tim Masters was excused, I mean, he had other plans. We went to a meeting with the county, and they were concerned about reflection, reflective with the airbags. So there's other issues that we're going to bring up, too. So it's not a, it's still a work in progress, correct?
Absolutely, it is.
Yeah.
One thing to do is to go on the website, so everybody can read it, and hopefully it all surrendered written comments, so that we have a chance to have them go through the attorney and the engineer and Tim Masters.
So what we're looking now is just to make, to have a public hearing for the solar law?
Exactly.
Ryan had explained this to me earlier, and I spoke to Bill about it, too. I didn't want to wait till the last minute, and then at the eleventh hour say, I have this big problem with it, just so it's out there.
Absolutely, and I'll keep a running list of the issues that are brought up. If they're a concern of the entire board, I can either draft multiple versions of the law that can be voted on, or to the extent that the issues are settled, I can come to a final version of the law that incorporates the changes.
And in two weeks, you'll let us know specifically how many days we have to have it published before we can actually act on the law? So if we have a public hearing, two weeks?
Four weeks. March twelfth.
March twelfth, okay, four weeks. And we, by residential input, we change it, and we have to.
You have to possess that law for a certain number of days. On the top of my head, I can't recall if it's five or ten, because it changes depending on the type of law. And I'm thinking that a zoning law needs an extra.
More time?
Yeah, I think, I believe the law carries out zoning laws for extra time. I will double-check on that, and I will make sure the town board has it in its final form for the requisite number of days prior to acting on it.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for the solar law on March twelfth at six o'clock.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So move. And then Ryan will jump right into the map, and we'll run through it.
Sure. So we had an application for planning board for an amendment of the map. It is by Forbes Cappretto, and it's amendment of, I guess, both maps, the Riverwalk map and the Wolf Run map. Bill Tyne is here from Forbes Cappretto. I'll ask him to come up to the microphone in case you have any questions for him, although I'm not sure there will be any questions for him. But basically, it is taking, what this does is it takes a slice of Riverwalk and adds it to a lot in Wolf, off Wolf Run, in order to make two buildable lots instead of just the one that was there. I don't know if you want to explain it further, or?
Yeah, I can grab the map, I don't think you have.
And you have all the.
So basically, what it was, when Riverwalk was laid out, there was a piece of property at the corner of Wolf Run and Riverwalk, and that piece was too shallow to be a conforming building lot. So it was just simply labeled as green space, and the developer retained it. It was never taken as a park, it wasn't public property. It's become, from my understanding, a bit of a maintenance nightmare, and then the town was pursuing Mr. Deck to ask him to build sidewalks across the parcel that he wasn't, he had no really use for. And so he approached us and asked if we would buy it. And then we looked at it, where we had on the French land map, lot number sixteen, the last lot on that side of the street, was really, really big. So we looked at it and said, we could distribute some of the land from lot sixteen and add it to this sliver that's a non-conforming lot in Riverwalk and create two building lots. Then that piece would now be maintained, people would cut the grass, we'd build sidewalks across it, and we'd build the house. And it's not creating a new, a single new parcel. It's just making one that was non-conforming conforming, so you can build a house on it. And in our view, everybody wins. We get another building lot, you get tax revenue from it, and someone to maintain it and take care of it. So it's really that simple. It's a win-win in our view.
And it's also going to get one of the sidewalks, correct?
Yeah, it's a corner. At least, I mean, we have a corner line, and we have to build sidewalks going on the corner, so we have no objection to that, it's not a problem.
Dave?
It will settle my issue with Deck.
Right.
When they take it over, sidewalks will be put in, or.
Right. And I know I spoke to Tim Masters, and he was all in favor of that, because of that same issue.
Yeah, we are in favor of it. I spoke with Tim, and it seemed to work out very well for us. Bob Land, the president.
I was, I was going to mention that the building department is in favor of it, and it seems to work out for everybody. You get a new lot on the tax. I mean, in theory, that green space was part of that development, but that development has stopped, and it can't continue, so, you know, half of it is green space right now.
As far as approving the amended.
What do you actually have to do?
Yeah, I was going to say, we have to approve this amended plan. Is there zoning that needs to be, non-zoning, I'm sorry, surveying and whatnot that needs to be done, or is it all that needs to be done?
Surveying has actually been done prior. One thing I will mention at this point is, the drainage easement runs through that lot, I see that, where they were, where they plan on building. I ran this past engineering, building department, everybody is okay. We can abandon that portion of the easement that's reflected in their map. And engineering is here, but they have signed off on that, building department's okay with that in terms of hookups and everything else like that. That'll be part of the permitting process.
Later on?
Yeah, but we also need a vote to release that portion of.
Do that today?
The drainage easement, yeah. So, and then there were conditions. So this went to our planning board as well. Planning board approved a bit, but there were a couple of conditions, and actually, it has just turned into one condition, and it's basically approval of this map amendment, but conditioned on installation of sidewalks on Riverwalk and Wolf Run prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, or prior to October thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, whichever comes first.
That second one could be an issue. We hope not, by the way. We would like to be able to sell it and build houses out there as quickly as we can.
Sure.
But it's already closing in on March, and we still have to get a customer, design it, build it, doesn't get built overnight. The last thing we want to do is put a sidewalk there and then get a building permit. They'd have to come in and destroy it. So that's why sidewalks are built along with building permits, which is what we're doing through the entire subdivision. So those sidewalks will connect with the rest of the lots we're building. Right now, it'd be a sidewalk to nowhere until we complete all the houses on the street. So my preference would be that it's left as a condition with CO. And we have no problem with the building permit. We'll build a house, and we'll build the sidewalks. But we don't want to build sidewalks and drive concrete from the top.
We understand that, and that's why it's, at the end of 2019, they have to do it. We've had situations before where nothing ever gets built, so then you end up with no sidewalks.
How about we move it up to the year of 2020?
The reason why I picked 2019 was the sidewalk agreement that was in place, put that October 31st, and I checked with Tim Masters on this prior to the meeting today, that sidewalk agreement that was in place said, you either do it as part of CO, or in no event is it installed after October 31st to 2019. So in order to keep it consistent, I kept it at, yeah, October 31st, 2019.
The only difference was either Deck for Riverwalk or the sidewalks that had to be built by the developer. Understand, we weren't the developer, either of these developments. So the developers had a portion of sidewalk on French Landing that went all the way out to Lower River Road. We weren't responsible for that either. The town tied us to that to make it be completed by a certain day. We agreed to that. There's no houses that we're building on that section of sidewalk. There's no risk that that sidewalk, if the developer doesn't do it, we have to put it in. And he really asked us to do it, to be candid with everyone, because he thought we could get a better price, as builders building sidewalks already. We said, that's fine. He'll pay us back for it if we have to get to that point. That's fine, we'll do that. But there's never any risk of that. This is a lot. We have sold, I think, two, three houses in there so far. We have 28 lots, if this is approved, to get through. I don't know how many building permits he did last year. I think the year before, Lewiston did 16 in a year. So for me to guarantee that some customer is going to pick that lot and get me done by the end of 2020, I can't guarantee it. And by the way, as a practical matter, the sidewalks in Riverwalk, you know, east of the intersection of Wolf Run, they don't go west. There are no sidewalks out to Lower River Road. So that sidewalk only connects to Wolf Run, which goes all the way to Lower River Road through the entire development, which has no condition, just build a sidewalk with a lot. I would prefer that we have the same issue. This lot's no different than any other lot in the development. We will build the sidewalks. We're not looking to not build it. This is a lot we own, we're closed on it, we're not on a takedown schedule. We want to sell it and build on it as much as anyone does. The last thing we like to do is just pay taxes on inventory. We like to move real estate. We're highly motivated to do that, but having, you know, the sword of damn cleaves hanging over our head to build sidewalks that we're only going to crush and destroy seems to have no practical, hurt us whatsoever.
What do you guys think?
For what it's worth, I can't recommend approval without that condition, because we have had so many issues in the past where we end up with lots and no sidewalks.
We build 80 houses a year. We are not going to fly by that out.
Oh, I can.
Ryan, am I correct that the developer could come back and petition us for an extension? We could address that in the summer of 2019 if we...
We could absolutely change that condition later on, making it a soft condition.
Right.
Okay. Anyone really wants to have you do additional work and destroy work that's been done? So, I mean, I would be in favor of a soft condition along those lines.
Right, I understand.
Let's make a motion to approve the amended map. I'm sorry.
Just one question. Are variances required for either one of these lots?
No, none.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the amended map.
One more discussion. You live in that area. There's no talk, no problems with it amongst neighbors?
I agree. It's looked bad there for some time. It's just sort of a dumpy little area that's swampy.
So this works to secure the neighbors and the neighborhood?
If both lots are sold and houses are built, it would certainly be better than what's there now.
And also address Dave's issues.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Sure. Yeah, it was Steve Lyle.
So I'll make a motion to approve the amended map cover for Riverwalk Phase 3A and French Landing, with the condition that sidewalks be put in contemporaneously with CO, or at the latest October 31st, 2020, 19, I'm sorry, with the acknowledgement that the developer can come to the town for an extension of that second requirement.
Thank you. Red motion?
Did we say 2020?
Corrected to 19.
Okay.
Red motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need a little bit more on this, because it was an action of the town. So we did do Seeker, it was filled out by Tim Masters of the building department. So we need to do a motion to accept Parts II and III of Seeker as filled out by Tim Masters, and the determination of the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Motion is second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then, one more. I need a motion to approve the partial release of the drainage easement as reflected in the amended map cover.
All in favor?
I need a motion to authorize the supervisor to execute the partial release of easement to be filed in the Niagara County Clerk's Office.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And just as a note, part of the property that's being added to the Riverwalk portion is within the drainage district for French Landing. Because part of that property is in the drainage district, that piece of that lot will be included in the drainage district as well.
Also will be included in the drainage, but it's just taken out of the drainage district.
That's correct. It'll be, that will be an extra lot painted of that drainage district.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that?
No motion on that, just for, just for thankfulness.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have a poster there, if anybody wants to see it real quick, correct?
Yeah, sure.
If anybody'd like to look at it, he's got it right there, I believe. It's a lot better than what we have here. I mean, well, I mean...
By the way, Mr. Supervisor, there are machines available called document readers. We should look into one for the future, because it's so easy to put that document on the screen and reflect right on the wall. It's easy as can be. It's technology that would make it so much easier for the public to be able to see what's going on.
Before we put the wall...
Before we put something on the wall.
Okay.
Well, who needs, or who's going to let Lynda Johnson's department know that that needs to be added to that drainage district?
You?
Okay. But I mean, we're adding a lot to the drainage district, so we need to include that in the tax...
Special improvement.
Yeah, it's a special district. That's the best part of the fund that...
That's correct. That cost will be borne over an additional lot now over what it was before.
Okay.
Twenty-eight, or twenty-seven? Yeah.
Okay, moving on to the rabies immunization clinic in the Town Highway Department, Council of Bets. Dave, do you want to speak to this? I mean, we're basically just coordinating this event, correct?
Yes, the only issue I have, they just sent me a note mentioning 26 tables or something. And I have to speak to Don about that, see if I can get a senior to send them or something. But other than that, everything's good. We're on board. I only had Spider-Man for a few hours, or a couple men for a few hours, but this is no issue.
The 26 tables, is that in addition to the 14, or is that what you're talking about?
They've updated...
They've updated?
Yeah.
So just for everyone to be aware, this is a clinic that's going to be held from 9:00 to 11:00 AM by the Health Department.
July 28th, I believe?
July 28th, 2018. And I believe the purpose of it shall be to provide rabies shots and probably take a look at your pets, so. Is it free of charge?
I'm not sure.
It is. Okay, free of charge, so. And they're going to take care of all of the hazardous materials that result.
There's a... No, I'm just finding the building and a couple men.
Very good. I don't think we need a...
No, no.
Just a...
Just a form of an announcement.
Thank you.
Terry, if you want. Terry's getting that when we're done. Give you all the information. VFW requests a place receptacle at Town Hall for flag collection. I can read this, Carol, I'll save it. This is to Don Garfinkel, Town Clerk from Lawrence Stephen, the Senior Vice Commander. Every year, our VFW posts assist Luport Intermediate School by retiring old American flags at their Flag Day ceremony. We would like to place a receptacle at the Town Hall, so people would be able to put their flags in the receptacle, and we would be able to retire them properly with dignity on Flag Day. We're in the process of obtaining a receptacle similar to the US mailboxes that are located outside the post office in the village. We will periodically collect the flags that have been dropped off at the Town Hall. It is my understanding that the box is appropriately painted. If you have any questions, please, you know, hesitate to contact me. I spoke with Ryan Parisi on this. He said, that's fine if we want to do it, we just have to have an agreement with them for liability, correct?
Anytime someone puts something on town property, you put together a licensing agreement. It's not really a sort of liability, and allows us to remove that property in the event that we don't want it there anymore. So if you do approve this, I would just approve it subject to attorney approval of a licensing agreement.
Does anybody have any questions?
The town clerk already has. It's nice and painted, and I'm not sure if it was a volunteer to it or not, but then they come to the school, and they have the event, and it's quite impressive that the students are invited out to participate. And when Iowa said Luport, they had played the taps, and it was quite impressive.
So I will, I'll make a motion to allow the VFW to put a receptacle at the Town Hall, so people would be able to put their flags in the receptacle and will be able to retire them properly on Flag Day. Per...
It can be outdoors.
Yes. Outdoors, yeah.
Subject to attorney...
Subject to attorney approval.
License agreement.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's going to be an at-will licensing agreement, basically. If you just terminate it for any reason, I would assume, right?
Correct.
There's going to be any notice or anything along those lines.
Just kind of like how we have the goodwill set up in the front part of the box.
Very good. Okay. The WPCC Hire Operator Trainee, Council of Bets.
Make a motion to authorize the hiring of a Joe Shuey 413 Riverwalk Drive Youngstown to be effective February 27, 2018, as wastewater treatment plant operator trainee, starting at 2181 per hour, as per the CSEA contract.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Sewer Service Request, Tuscarora Road.
I guess my office has been working with Jeff Ritter on the response, and I believe Jeff is going to speak, reach out to the individual for the discussion.
Okay.
Should we table that? We're going to need any further action on it?
No, the person wants to know why they can't have sewers out on Tuscarora Road. There's, you know, a mile, there's about a mile, you know, sewer line, so we have a few points that we're going to contact them, but...
So we can take it off the agenda?
Okay. Now, this is where I place the bicentennial for Council of Guyden.
It came to my attention by looking at the empty behind us that we're getting close to a bicentennial, and I think it's time to start thinking about it. The Village Bicentennial comes on first, and I would be very pleased if we could coordinate the Village and the Town bicentennial over a period of a couple of years. We have various groups. We have our own historical preservation. We have HAL, Historical Association of Lewiston, the Sanborn Marching Band, Council of the Arts, can all get involved in this, but we need to start thinking about it. I just wanted to present it to the board members, that they can do a little, put a little thought to it, and see how we can, what ideas to come up with, and maybe we could have events, maybe we could have something actually built or placed. One of the things that I thought, right off the top of my head, coming into Lewiston, there's only one official Lewiston, welcome to Lewiston sign, which is up by St. Mary's Hospital. Maybe it might be appropriate to look for some green ray funds, to place some other appropriate signs in honor of the bicentennial. That's interesting, the Village was incorporated first, the Town of Lewiston was in another town, then it was carved off for itself, so the Village's bicentennial was, I heard a year, one or two years prior?
I think it's one.
One year ahead.
Okay.
So maybe we could have a nice series of events. Put for thought.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Bill, what date are we looking at, tentatively, approximately?
Just, it would be '23. The Village is '22, the Town will be '23, we're into '18, and it takes time to arrange all these things.
Right, but because of the conflict between the two, would we combine them, or...
I would hope that we could combine them and have some sort of events over a period of two years.
Right.
The burning of Lewiston, therefore...
You're not planning this?
No. But when they did the burning of Lewiston, the enactment, it did in a couple of years, and it was quite impressive. I'm not sure what, it actually took place in 1823 that we could have a reenactment. But people are very creative and thoughtful, and they might come up with something good.
15 minutes on the sign committee. Can we change this?
When's the anniversary of the sign committee? Can you work on that, too?
Once, and it's all going.
Okay, moving on. Director of Finance. I know Marty, we accepted Marty's resignation at a previous board meeting, and Marty and Amy Smith were very influential and helped to find our replacement. And I'm happy to say that our new finance director is in the audience right now, and that's Jacqueline Ignole. I'd like to introduce Jackie. Would you want to say anything, or...
I'm very excited for this opportunity, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
And Jackie comes to us from Niagara University, and she's looking forward to getting a head start here at the town. So I would like to make the appointment of Jacqueline Ignole as Director of Finance, effective March 2nd, 2018, at the annual budgeted salary at $61,200. I would do that first.
The appointment is yours.
Yeah, it's mine.
It's moved to set the salary at $61,200.
And your motion is going to be second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then also, in front of you...
Smile. Welcome to my world.
Take that picture again in the air.
I actually want you to get a picture of Rosemary Warren, and maybe they'll think she's earning a budget. Oh, absolutely. Also, I would like to approve the training contract for Martha Blazek, Marty Blazek, which was budgeted for, agreement for consulting services. Marty will be training Jackie for the year and assisting with the budget and making the transition as smooth as possible. I want to say that one of the biggest things that I've noticed since I've taken office is how important that position is. It's, I mean, it's basically the entire town is on the back of the finance director, and Marty's done an incredible job, and I know how important it is to make that transition. Marty did not have that transition. Marty went alone, and hopefully we never have to go through that again. I wasn't here for that, but it wasn't fair to Marty, and I don't want it to be unfair to anybody else in the future. So I would ask for the approval of the training contract for Marty Blazek. So move.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
And also, on that note.
I have some, yeah, I just noticed, called for your signature, having my motion didn't include authorizing you to sign it, so I'm just going to include that as a friendly amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Also, I would like to announce, and I believe this will be good news to Rosemary Warren, that if Rosemary decides to call 911 in the future, it will not be me that will be responding to administer any type of CPR or anything, because as of January 31st, I retired from the Niagara County Sheriff's Department.
Will they younger guy?
I don't know, no guarantees, no guarantees. I thought you wanted a rich older guy.
I'm getting desperate.
So I just wanted to announce that publicly. I know a lot of people have already known that, but I just wanted, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, moving on, also.
One more thing.
Article?
One more thing with the junior bookkeeper.
Oh, yeah, but I haven't gotten it yet. Actually, we didn't, we didn't add that, and I apologize, they didn't add that to the.
I thought it was under the Director of Finance.
Okay. You know what? I don't have that. I don't have that. I got it. It's on my desk. Also, with regret, we would like to accept a letter as notice of resignation as of our junior accountant, Tara Johnson, effective February 22nd, 2018. Second with regret.
Yeah.
Yeah. With a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I want to give Tara a lot of credit, she did an amazing job. She, I believe she came with an auditing background, so she really went through and to the penny assisted Marty, so we're going to miss her. Also, purchase of audio equipment. I talked to Dr. Abendanza, he came in, they tried the new equipment in the room here, they were getting a terrible feedback from all these microphones. I believe, I, I don't know the breakdown, like he said, these are, I don't know if he said these were analog or these were old, and it was just a humming noise in all the audio that they, and video they, they recorded. So what he's asking is, I would move to authorize the purchase of audio equipment in the amount of $575 needed to complete an audiovisual system for the purpose of recording council meetings and other council approved motions. As per our agreement with Time Warner, now Spectrum Cable, Article 5.2 PEG Capital Support, funds have been put aside for this project and are presently available. Second. We have a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I, there's one more thing I just wanted to bring up since it is a work session. We're running out of room here at Town Hall. I talked to Donna and a couple other people, and we looked around at reconfiguring the Town Hall without adding any additions, but reconfiguring it. The accounting area is insufficient, I believe the, the Town Assessor is overrun. So I just want to bring it up that I would like to kind of pursue getting some ideas. I know, Bob, you said you really didn't do that type of thing, but getting somebody in and kind of giving us some ideas and reconfiguring some walls and some office space in the Town Hall. I believe, you know, this will be the last thing we could possibly do before we did do an addition. I just wanted to let everybody know that we're going to be looking into it, and present it before the board, obviously, some type of reconstruction inside the, the Town Hall for a couple more offices. So, maybe that's just, just a heads up. Now we move on to part, crediting past part-time employment, Councilman Guyven. Well, we, I think, actually, I think we need to go to Ryan Preese, because Ryan had, I talked to him today on this. Ryan, do you want to touch base on that?
Yeah, so there was a request to credit part-time past employment for the purposes of determining employees' benefits and such. I went to the applicable collective bargaining agreement, and basically what the collective bargaining agreement says, not basically, I'll read it to you word for word, for the purposes of calculating the length of service of a regular full-time employee, one year will be credited for each year of service beginning on the employee's initial date of hire as a regular full-time employee. This employee wants to be credited for time he spent part-time in the past. I would recommend denying it as the language of the collective bargaining agreement speaks to this exact situation and says.
In the Highway Department, correct?
Yeah, in the Highway Department, it, it says exactly how you get credited for your time, and you don't get credited for past part-time employment.
Okay. So according to his letter, though, he did say he was working full-time at part-time.
Yeah, and the way the contract reads is, I believe this was either, it was like temporary work?
It was seasonal.
It was seasonal work, and, and the, the language is, as a regular full-time employee, and I don't think that a seasonal employee can be considered a regular employee.
So do we make a motion or just no action?
I mean, you can, you can still make the motion, I'm sure he'll be notified in some way, but.
Let's do it that way, let, make a motion to deny crediting past part-time employment to Ryan Carey.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. It's been a crazy week here. Obviously, we had Tara retire, resign, and we have two more employees leaving. This is from John Sharp. John Sharp advises, I am retiring from my position of clerk part-time effective February 16th, 2018. John, who was a part-time clerk, he was a assistant to the engineer when he was first hired 20 years ago. We're sad to see him go, so it is with regret that I make a motion to accept the retirement of John Sharp. Effective February 16th, I'm sorry.
What about position of historian?
Well, we, we don't know yet. We don't know yet. So a second, motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, I'll read a letter, this is from Lewiston Police Officer, Part-Time Police Officer Vinnie Penessa. Hi, Officer Penessa, I'm writing this letter to inform you of my resignation from the Lewiston Police Department. The month of February 2018 will be my highest month of employment as a Lewiston officer. Unfortunately, my career path is taking me to a different police department. On March 1st, 2018, I will be sworn as a Niagara Falls Police Officer. Throughout my years of employment here, the members and the supervisors of the Lewiston Police Department have helped mold me into the officer I am proud to say am today. The knowledge and experience I have gained from my time here will carry me, carry with me throughout my career sincerely, Vincent Penessa. And I just like to add, you know, he's going to Niagara Falls where his father was a police officer for many, many, many years.
Was his father?
Sales. 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 Second. With regret. All in favor?
Aye.
So.
In passing today, we had a conversation about the number of retirees that, potential. We lost Kevin Payne a couple weeks ago after 40 years of experience, and he'll be hard to replace. Some of our labor forces are getting older and they'll be retiring, and it's going to have an impact on the budget and our workforce. Something to keep in mind.
Okay. That is all I have, if anybody, if nobody else has any more, I will open up to the privilege of the floor, and we'll start with Rosemary Warren.
I did a print of information on H97, H98, and the New York State Power Authority money, how it's coming in. Martha answered, and as I said, some of the pages I sent on to Jeffrey Missoula, and he's that chief executive of the controller in the local office, and I deal with him, and he keeps all the pages, the files that I send him for the next audit. So as I said, I thought it was kind of interesting. Now, a lot of people might not realize, the New York State Power Authority, we get $850,000 on gear. That's a lot of money. It'll be for 50 years. We've used up about 10. Now, maybe some of you do not remember, but Fred Nuland is the one that started this. He is the one that got more money for the Town of Lewiston, and why did he get that? Because I used to go to the host committee meetings when they're giving up the money. Fred realized that the reservoir took quite a bit of Town of Lewiston money, or land, and also then became non-taxable. We've got a lot of tax-exempt property, not fire companies, but not against them. We've got other little commissions and little places here, so Fred wheeled and wheeled, I don't know how, I'm not behind the closed doors or anything, I can't, anybody talk to me, but Fred got more for us than maybe the other towns did, and we deserve it. So the other thing is, though, with our getting this $153 that we got, I think that in maybe five years, we should get more money. If it's too difficult to take it off the electric bill, which some people feel that was too difficult, then why not about every five years, give back the people? Because you, I think it could be done in-house, because now you've got the majority, maybe City Key Bank won't send us to how they did it, but you've got now the majority of who gets this rebate, and then you could just plug in a few new people. So I kind of think that would be a way to go. I would like to say the snow plowing, is he, oh, he's here, there. He usually runs out before I get to say this. Snow plowing, doing very, very good. They're very efficient, and I want to say what? My brother, when he was in high school, was a wingman to earn extra money in the winter. Now, in those days, I lived across the street, so we would take the phone calls, you didn't have an office, you took the phone calls, and it was plowing the street, the road to get the ambulance for a woman going to have a baby, you're coming up to the ridge. The snowplow guys picking up, pulling out cars on the ditch, so we're taking all these calls. We're suddenly getting calls, Bonnie, that the snowplow is taking too long at the corner of the Karma Grove and Pearson Road or something. So finally, somebody figures it out, this is where a farm girl is undressing, behind her curtain. So my brother, 17, is getting education from the older plow grinder. And then they couldn't figure out why they were spending 20 minutes there, they knew when the young farm girl was going to be undressing, and so her shape, his silhouette, is behind the shade that she drew. So my brother was getting too thin. One, he was getting education on plowing, and he was getting an education on women. Now, grumpy farmers usually have their mailboxes taken off. Oh, yeah, the wingman can do that, you know. So this grumpy farmer, he better be nice to the plow guys and the rest of the town because you're going to be losing things. Now, I want to say, you might say, Mrs. Warren, you look terrible. Well, I cannot look good, because once you're a widow in Sandborne, the women are afraid I'm going to be looking at their husbands, so I have to be, you won't see me looking good at all. Thank you.
Good evening, Karen Lyle, 4227 Lower River Road. I'm here tonight to respectfully request that the revised and updated Town Ethics Policy that was developed by the Lewiston Alliance in conjunction with specifically Mr. Bax and Mr. Morial, to be placed on the agenda for a vote at the next board meeting, which would be 2/26. As you know, the current Lewiston Ethics Policy is dated 6/22/1970, it's 48 years old, and certainly some things have changed since that time. This updated ethics policy was first introduced by the Lewiston Taxpayers Alliance in October 2016. We sat down and it, we made it a collaborative project with the board and with the Alliance, along with some members of the Current Ethics Commission. So this was sort of a joint effort. Took us about a year, but the latest copy was submitted to your board in October 2017. So I respectfully ask that you do that, and I thank you for your consideration, and here is the last one that I provided as well. I'll get it to Carol.
Thank you very much. Announcements, Town Offices will be closed Monday, February 19th in observance of President's Day. Upcoming meetings, the Historic Preservation, February 13th at 6:00 p.m. in the lunchroom, the Environmental Commission, February 13th at 7:00 p.m. in the Supervisor's Office, Planning Board, February 15th at 6:30 p.m., and then the regular Town Board Meeting on February 26th at 6:00 p.m. And with that, a motion to.
Happy Valentine's Day to everyone.
Oh, yes, yes.
Celebrating either the 13th or the 14th issue.
Yes.
As Republicans, you should know today's Abraham Lincoln's birthday also. So happy birthday, Abe.
Happy birthday. Take a motion to close.
You never put that picture back up.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.